Josh and Jean are in attendance as Dan Scrip, Town Council. So I'm going to open tonight's meeting of Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, December 17th at 6:30. The town administrator had something come up, he may or may not join us. So if he does, great, otherwise I'll try to do my best at this. Let's go to go to the coronavirus update with a health nurse, Deb Murphy and John Coolin. Deb, it's all yours.
Okay, thanks, Mark. So the weekly numbers have just come in, as a matter of fact. And it's unfortunate that the numbers are going up as fast as they are everywhere across the state, including in our local area. We had in the state today, 4,985 new cases, which made our seven-day positivity rate 6.02%, which we, of course, wanted always to be under 5%. In Nahat, for the period from 11/29 to 12/12, which was reported tonight by DPH, we had sixteen new cases, which gave us an average daily incident rate of 35.3, which puts us, because we had greater than 15 cases, it puts us back in the yellow. So however, when we look at the Chelsea, Lynn, and Revere are really, really three top in the state, they're just, they can't get this out of control, their numbers are so, so high. And even Swam Scott went into the red in this timeframe, they had 140 new cases in the last two weeks. And Marblehead had 120 new cases. So we had 16, so I guess, you know, it might sound like a lot for us, but still, I still think that we're in relatively good shape. The average age of our, right now, I have nine active cases in town, and the average age is 42. The average age for the state right now is 38, so we're not too far away from that. Tony also asked me this week if I could speak a little bit about where the cases are coming from, you know, where is the exposure taking place? Was it, do we have a lot that was a direct result from Thanksgiving? And the answer is actually, no, we don't. So out of the nine active cases that we have, four are directly related to work environments where people work. And then, of course, when you, when you test positive and you are in a family, it's natural for the family members to, you know, maybe test negative at the beginning, but then convert to positive. So that's what we're seeing here. So there's been absolutely no school transmission. I met with a school again this week. They continue to do great in the school. The Swam Scott school system, I don't know if people are aware of it, but as of this coming Monday, they're going 100% remote until January 8th. So that's, those are the numbers for us. On average, I get right now, it seems like one or two cases every single day. Another one just came in right before this meeting. The testing that we're doing in Nahat, the Wednesday and Friday testing, seems to be going, it's very, let's just say it seems very well-attended. There have been some issues with people not being able to get their results or access their results. I'm lucky enough that I can get the, I get the test results, I always get the positives, and I usually can get the negatives, so that if people can't find them, I've been able to find them for them. So I'm not exactly sure, you know, why that's happening. There's a lot of volume between Nahat and Swam Scott with tests. I mean, we had, over in our community, the last two weeks, we had 602 people tested. And in Swam Scott, they had 3,000, you know, 3,301. And these are the same people, you know, doing the testing and trying to get the results out. So you can see with the volume, you might expect to have a little bit of human error there, but, you know, if people are looking for results, I don't mind at all if they give me a call, I can certainly try to look them up for them. So I think that's all I have, Mark. There's a lot of, there were a lot of meetings this week about the new vaccine.
Yeah.
And the communities will be in Level 3, which will probably not be until, you're talking maybe April, May area. They've just started now, as most people know, giving them out in hospitals. I did talk to the director of the Jesmond Nursing Home, because nursing homes are in the second tier, and they will be working with CVS. CVS has a contract to provide the vaccine to the nursing homes. So they don't have a date yet from that, but more to come. It will be coming soon, I think they, we're talking about December 28th, actually.
Mm-hmm. So. Are they doing regular testing at the Jesmond, Deb?
Are they doing, the staff are doing their own testing.
Yeah.
They have to, with the state, they were doing random testing, they had to test every two weeks, but because the numbers started going up across the state again in the nursing homes, they're doing it every week now on a random sample of 30% of their staff. So, and I follow their reports, their reports are reported out weekly from DPH, and they're in 100% compliance at the Jesmonds.
Great. Excellent. Well, thank you, Deb. John, I see you just got on, anything from, for you? You're muted, John. Dan, can you unmute?
Yep, I got you, let me, let me find him.
I got it. That was me.
There we go, good, okay.
So for the past 15 years, I've been representing Nahat on a regional group of public health departments on the North Shore. There are eight of us, and we are, we look at sharing public health services, identifying common needs and approaches to them. And we've been approached regarding the vaccinations of first responders in Phase 2. I've been in touch with Deb and Tony, and there's more to come. We will be allowed to join Lynn when they do theirs, and they'll just ask that we assist them when our first responders are going over to, to get vaccinated. I'm doing year-end food inspections, and we're on track to, to complete that. We do inspections prior to your approval of alcohol licenses, common victular licenses. However, we have eight food permits where it's not tied into common victular license or alcohol. Anyway, that's on track. And each inspection includes discussions of COVID-19 compliance. It includes whether the staff is using masks properly, and are masks being made available to customers? Does management have a plan for a response to a COVID-19 exposure? How is the facility's air handling capabilities? Because as you know, the coronavirus attaches and travels by means of droplets exhaled. So is there dead airspace? Is there a means of not circulating the air, but removing the air and replacing it with fresh makeup air? Anyway, we also look at the frequency of the cleaning of frequently touched surfaces. So COVID-19 certainly is, is in our norm in everything that we do at this time. The, the group I, I referenced with regard to first responder vaccinations was looking at attempting to make these, these efforts be as efficient as possible, so that the police and fire chiefs are not looking at paying for their personnel to be waiting in line for hours, which would be very inefficient, obviously. We're also looking at the fact that currently, there is no state money that has been allocated for, for this effort, even though the responsibility is being given to local boards of health for ensuring the vaccination during Phase 2 of their first responders. So we will continue to be looking at that. It was also discussed at a statewide public health membership meeting, I'm on the executive committee of the Massachusetts Health Officers Association, and we and four other professional organizations in the state for public health are, are looking at these issues, not only funding, but also representation at the state level of local boards of health, of which we have no representation at some points, some groups, some levels. So it would be much better if we were represented at all levels, but, but we are not. So we will continue to try and make that happen. And I can tell you that, as well as everybody, but especially our colleagues in public health, local public health especially, the, it takes a toll. And the toll it is taking is palpable and obvious to me whenever I attend these meetings, not only regionally, but, but statewide. So I can assure Deb that we are, we are not alone. This is, it's certainly been very long haul, and although we've had it described as being a light at the end of the tunnel, the tunnel is very long. And we will continue to do, do the best we can. And I certainly appreciate the support that we've been getting from local officials, as well as the folks we're, we're trying to serve. So I'll end it there, unless you have any questions.
Thanks, John, for the update. Josh or Jean, any questions?
No, I have none. That's a great job. Thank you.
Not really, thanks, thanks for that update, John. And Deb, thanks for including the numbers of new cases and active cases, I know there was some curiosity about that. Thanks for that. It's tough when the surrounding communities where we all do our grocery shopping and so on have such high incidence rates, so, you know, in perspective, we're fortunate, but it's tough with surrounding communities where we all, by necessity, have to have some interaction. But anyway, thanks for the update.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Just to restate, so testing, there will be testing tomorrow at, at St. Thomas from 11 to 1. Next week, testing will be on Tuesday and Wednesday, that's the 22nd and 23rd, from 11 to 1 at St. Thomas. And then the following week, again, will be on Tuesday and Wednesday, 11 to 1, that's the 29th and the 30th. Also, I've noticed that the lines are not so bad last few times we were testing. Residents from Nahat can still go to Swam Scott. Swam Scott is testing Monday through Friday from 2:30 to 6:30, and on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And that's at the Swam Scott Fieldhouse at Phillips Park, 585 Humphrey Street, so you can always go there. Thanks, Deb, thanks, John, really appreciate it. Let's see, I got opening, hold on a second, hold on a second, I lost my, I lost my page here.
Opening comments, winter parking ban.
Yeah, I got it. But before we do that, I just want to do some opening comments. Again, I thought that Public Works did a great job keeping up with the storm overnight, appreciate that. The only, I did get a text or an email from a resident concerned about just salting on Surfview over at Bass Point, the very narrow street. And I know that that can be pretty tough to get down with some of our plows. I have a story I can tell about Surfview, when I was in high school, I think, I was plowing for the town one summer, and I think I was riding with Luke Kane in the truck, and we were going down Surfview, and the plow was a little bit wider than the street, and we ended up taking the porch off one of the houses. So I know how difficult Surfview can be. And I'll, I'll make sure that Zach gets his crews down there. Okay, let me just catch up here, I just kind of lost my space here.
So now our DPW is seeking snow removal.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, with the parking ban, again, it goes into effect on the 21st through, December 21st through March 20th, from 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Again, for people who have a problem finding a parking space, contact the Nahat Police Department, and there could be some waivers. But of course, when we have a storm, you can have to find a place for the cars. Nahat DPW is seeking, wow, people who are plowing, the town, the town in Nahat, part of Public Works is now accepting applications for snow removal equipment with operations interested in snow plowing. This agreement is on a needed basis, must be available 24 hours a day, and with a hourly pay depending on the size of the vehicle and the type of accessories included. So if you get any questions, call Mary Lowe at the Town Hall. If you're interested in trying to get on the list, she'll help you do that. Holiday trash pickup schedule, let's see, Thursday, the 24th, we'll still have, sorry, guys, I'm just, I keep losing my, my spot here. Thursday will, will be, pickup on the 24th will be as usual. Friday, 25th will be moved to Saturday, the 26th. Thursday, December 31st will stay as usual, and Friday, January 1st, we move to January 2nd. Any questions, call Nahat Town Hall. I was also asked to remind everybody that real estate bills are due tomorrow. Let's see, any other opening comments around Josh or Jean?
Sure, I'd just like to keep Tom Gallery in our hearts, on his passing, longtime Nahat police officer and speaker at our memorial parades at the cemetery. And Dan, I don't know, there may be some people curious about the status of the Kelly Greens negotiation, is it appropriate for you to give a quick update on?
Sure. I spent an hour on the phone today with Attorney Shapiro, who represents R&amp;B, we are headlong into a second draft. We were able to agree to terms up to about, that's about two-thirds of the changes that she had, so we're making good headway. I have to connect with Pete Fitzgerald, hopefully tonight or tomorrow, and get him a copy of the second draft, so then we can, and then agree on that and move on and send it to Attorney Shapiro and move forward. So it's, it's moving to, moving forward progressively.
Dan, what's the, Dan, what's the long-range plan look like? Can you give it, give us some future thoughts?
Yeah, I don't, what do you mean by that, Jean, long-range? It's a five-year lease for now.
Time-wise for opening or any part?
Oh, no, we're not there yet. I, at the next meeting, I should be able to give you a much better idea, but we're not quite there yet. We do know, we'll point out that Brett is down there, the car park is open, obviously except for today, but when the weather permits, it is open, so people can still golf, but the restaurant, of course, is closed and anything like that, so it's just golf right now.
Okay, thanks.
Just one more thing, Mark. I know some months back, Tony and possibly Zach, too, also had some correspondence with National Grid about reviewing Little Nahat's electrical infrastructure. I don't think any progress has been made there, so I'd like to see about us sending a joint letter to National Grid to sort of force their hand in reviewing that Little Nahat electrical infrastructure. This is some kind of, I mean, the pole at the end of Little Nahat Road looks like it's ready to tip over, and there's low line, low hanging wires with rags hanging from them, and I think part of the problem last time they lost power was a transformer that was, let's say there were no spares readily available, so that extended the power outage, so I'd like to, I'd like to do a better job, and so maybe we can all compose a joint letter and put a little pressure on them.
Yeah, better yet, why don't we try to get a National Grid on our agenda next, our next meeting and have a representative join us?
I like that, that sounds good.
All right.
Hey, Mark, I had a couple of calls on this week's trash. Obviously, it wouldn't be picked up, it'll be picked up tomorrow, and tomorrow's trash will be picked up on Saturday.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks, Jean.
Thanks, yeah. All right, I just wanted to say, Tony's not here, so in citizens forum, I think what we're going to try to do is, if you have any questions, I can, I can see there's not many people joining us tonight, if you have any questions, I think we're going to just, if you could just type them up, put them in the chat room, we'll take a look at them, we'll answer them at our next meeting, I think that'd be the easiest way of going about that. That sound all right, Dan?
That sounds fine.
I've got, let's see, new business, we have some minutes to approve.
Yes.
Hey, Mark, when we, Mark, when we do these minutes, when we have groups of four or more, can we take them as a group, or do we have to approve each one separately?
Dan can take that, I think.
Yeah, to this date, we've been approving them separately, so let's keep on moving with that. If we want to change that pattern and practice, I'll look into that, but for now, let's keep it one at a time.
Okay.
That's a good question, Jean, and we'll save some time, no doubt about it.
All right, so I will change the motion, which includes all the dates, to individual dates. So I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meetings from October 1st, 2020.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Josh Andrew Mai.
Jean Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from October 22nd, 2020.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Josh Andrew Mai.
Jean Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from November 19th, 2020.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Josh Andrew Mai.
Jean Canty, aye.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote, oh, sorry, Mark, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from December 3rd, 2020.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Josh Andrew Mai.
Jean Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. So I know that Kristin Taylor's been, been pretty busy getting these together, so I appreciate that, Kristin.
So we're officially up to date?
Yeah, good job.
Jean, let me, can I, Chairman, can I, can I interject one thing?
Sure.
Thinking more about Jean's question, the open meeting law doesn't specify how minutes need to be approved, the fact is, you don't even have to approve an open session, the chair can do it individually.
Right.
Per each member, if they wanted to do that sort of thing, that's how the zoning board does it here. So my, my best guess, Jean, is that yes, we will be able to do it communatively, but just let me make sure of that and let you guys know at the next meeting. But at this point, I don't see a point, I don't see a problem in it.
It's just taking some time.
Now that we're up to speed, it, it may be less of an issue. You know, now that we're up to date, we might be not be approving multiple past meetings, right?
Right.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, we have some licenses to approve, and as we heard earlier from John Coolin, that we're going to go through these licenses, we're going to make our approvals, but they're subject to, you know, all inspections being complete and payment of all outstanding fees or fines and payment, and other payments to the town, so although we will be approving these licenses tonight, before they're released, they'll be contingent upon those, the, the owners meeting those requirements. So go ahead, Josh.
All right, so the first are the liquor licenses. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following liquor license renewal applications for calendar year 2021 to be approved by A, B, C, C. Nahat Knights of Columbus Building Association Incorporated, 17 relay yard, club license, all alcoholic beverages. Good Halls, Inc., doing business as Bayside Restaurant, 1 Southwick Ave, restaurant license, all alcoholic license, excuse me, all alcoholic beverages. Tides at Nahat, Inc., Tubey Wilson Road, restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. Atlantic Functions, Inc., doing business as Ocean View, Zero Willow Road, restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. RC Convenience Store, Inc., doing business as Seaside Variety, 141 Nahat Road, package store license, all alcoholic beverages. Nahat Country Club, 280 Nahat Road, club license, all alcoholic beverages.
That's, you got a second on that, Jean?
Yeah, just a quick question, is there a reason that we do this before we do the inspections or complete the inspections? Wouldn't it seem more logical to do the inspections, and this would kind of force us to do them and get them done?
Yeah, we typically, we typically do, Jean, get the inspections done prior to it, but with COVID going on and everything else, it was, it was tough to get them all completed in a timely manner. But as John said, he's, he's out doing them now, John, you want to chime in on that?
All that, all the food establishments that also have common victular licenses have been inspected and passed by me. The remaining permits that I'm working on are the places in town where there's no alcohol license, there's no common victular license, places like the Nahat Village Church, the Tiffany Room, the Jesmond, Johnson School, Richland, Life Saving Station, you know, those are the places I'm catching up with. Every, every place else is, is fine.
Okay, I'm, I'm a lot more comfortable knowing every place else is fine, that's, that makes it work. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, Jean, can I have a second on this motion?
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, any further discussion on this motion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor?
Josh Andrew Mai.
Jean Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Common victular licenses, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following common victular licenses as stands alone or in connection with as stands alone or in connection with a liquor license for the calendar year 2021 for the following establishments. Knights of Columbus, excuse me, Nahat Knights of Columbus Building Association, doing business as Nahat Knights of Columbus 17 Relay Yard. Tides at Nahat, Tubey Wilson Road, Atlantic Functions, doing business as Oceanview Zero Willow Road. Goodalls Inc., doing business as Ways, Bayside, One Southwick Ave, Seaside Pizza, 149 Nahat Road, Seaside Variety, 141 Nahat Road. Nahat Country Club, 280 Nahat Road. That's it.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing then. All in favor?
Josh Andrew my.
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Some used car dealers here.
Another motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following used car dealers licenses. Class two for the calendar year 2021 for George Mastaris, doing business as Seaside Auto, Five Linda Lane, and Francis Baril, doing business as Nahat Garage, 21 Spring Road. That's it.
When we, when, when we approve these, is that subject to inspection?
Uh, I've been, Dan, you can jump in, but I think that the George Mastaris is a a license for used cars, but he doesn't have used cars on Linda Lane. He has a lot, I think, in Revia. Having the license allows him to go to the auctions, I think, to buy used cars. Uh, and I don't believe that there's any other inspections that are required for these licenses.
I believe that's true.
Okay, I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing, hearing none. All in favor?
Josh Andrew my.
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye.
Next on the list is approve annual entertainment licenses. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following entertainment licenses for the calendar year 2021. Nahat Knights of Columbus 17 Relay Yard, five TVs, five musicians, DJ, and pool table. Functions Inc., doing business as Oceanview Zero Nahat Road, live music, DJ. Goodalls Inc., doing business as the Bayside, One Southwick Ave Jukebox, seven-piece orchestra, non-amplified. Tides at Two Wilson Road, ten TVs, two amusement devices, live music and karaoke. Nahat Country Club, 280 Nahat Road, TV, live music, DJ. That's all.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor?
Josh Andrew my.
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Okay, going down the agenda, ongoing business, deserving East Point, continued discussion. I don't have much to say about this at this point. We're still waiting for the financial impact report. Hopefully, that's coming before the end of the year. I know that there is a Conservation Commission has scheduled a a meeting for a notice of intent. And that is, what is that, Josh?
The 21st, so next, I think it's next Monday?
Next Monday. That'll be, that'll be zoomed. I know that Dan, the town, Tony had requested the state to extend the, was it chapter 53 requirements? We haven't heard from them, right?
I have not. Jeff Blake's special counsel is handling that, so I wouldn't hear about that.
All right.
I talked to Tony yesterday, and as of yesterday morning, anyway, he had not heard back on that.
All right.
One thing that I think Gene had requested at the last meeting, the, the December 3rd meeting, was some kind of flow chart and a timeline associated with the process. Northeastern's application processes. So it'd be nice to get that completed and up on our website, so people can understand how that whole process works and the sequence of events and associated timelines. So I can work with Tony on getting that.
That'd be great.
All right, thanks for following up on that, Josh.
Sure.
Go ahead, Josh.
I had one more question. Last meeting, we also talked about setting up that public informational meeting on eminent domain with James Masterman and Jeff Blake. Has a date been set for that? I have not heard from Tony on a confirmation of a date.
Um, I, I'm not sure. I thought it was January, I don't know, is it 17th or 18th? I'll double check tomorrow.
It was mid-January.
Yeah. I, I know that Tony mentioned some date. I'm not quite sure which date it was.
All right.
We'll put that on the website, though.
I didn't know if either of you two had heard, but I had not yet heard of a confirmed date, but hope to hear soon.
Uh, very good. Uh, okay. So Town Administrator's Report, we have the administrative consent order. Do you want to talk about that, Dan, and what that is?
Sure, sure. This is a administrative consent order which resulted from an administrative action by the D E P. And what that means is the D E P was alerted to our two major ruptures back in June of 2019 and June of 2020. So that sort of spawned their interest in looking closer as to how we're dealing with runoff and, and water issues and sewer issues and things like that. And due to the breach, that is technically a regulatory violation. So the D E P has got to respond. So this is, this is a friendly event, and all the D E P do is making sure that we are taking measures and making plans to to improve our wastewater system and to ensure it doesn't, or do our best to ensure that it doesn't breach again and then, you know, quote-unquote, contaminate surrounding areas. So this administrative order is setting forward a plan, which we actually started complying with already, because we've already submitted draft bylaws for infiltration and inflow. We've already submitted a C C T TV engineering report from Dan Coffin of Coffin Engineering. And we, all we have to do now is execute the consent order, and that sets into play a few other deadlines to meet. We have, once the effective date of the order begins, which is the day the D E P, Eric Warhol, Warhol signs it, we have 45 days to provide our implementation schedule. Then in September 20, September 1st, 21st, I'm sorry, back that up. We have 45 days to submit our emergency response schedule, and Zach is working with Wright and Pierce to make that happen. And then on September 1st, 2021, our implementation schedule is due. And at the end of 20, at the end of 21, we should be, we should be at a substantial completion date. All of these dates have been approved and verified by Coffin Engineering, Wright and Pierce. So this has been an ongoing event in terms of reaching the point where we can sign this, this A C O. And we've been working with the E P, Coffin Engineering, Wright and Pierce. So now it's just a matter of executing the document and getting this timeline energized. I should point out, there is a, there was a, a fine of about just under $10,000 for these violations, but that fine will be waived as long as we maintain the timeline. And once the A C O, the administrative consent order is signed, I will create a timeline so we can make sure we're keeping on pace with, with what we need to do. So in order for Tony to sign this, he needs the board's authorization pursuant to the Town Administrator Act, and I sent you, Mark, a draft motion to make that happen.
Okay, let me hold on a second.
I just put it in the chat. I can send it again if you like.
No, I get it.
Okay.
Um, okay, I can make the motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Town Administrator to execute the administrative consent order just discussed.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? The only point I wanted to make is, it says in the consent order, and I think you referenced it, Dan, that substantial completion of approved construction work shall be achieved on or before December 31st, 2021. That means the forced main replacement on the lineway, correct?
I, I believe it does. I believe it does. And that is really Wright and Pierce's bailiwick, and we made sure that Tim Simbro was comfortable, I'm sorry, Tom Simbro was comfortable with that date, and he was. So that's not a concern.
Yeah, from what I understand, this is all, pretty much all work that we already had, you know, in the queue. So it worked. It's very necessary. So
Yeah, this-
Rather than for us, it, it's consistent with what we had planned, so.
Yep.
Okay, um, any other thing in the Town Administrator's Report?
We think we had a vote, Mark.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, the motions are made and seconded. No further discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Josh Andrew my.
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Uh, I've, we've been notified by the Town Administrator that there's a vacant seat on the Conservation Commission. Anyone interested should submit a letters of, of interest and resumes to Kristen Taylor at thehat.org. I, I talked to the Town Administrator today about this. I know we're planning on having a Conservation Commission hearing on the 21st, as Josh mentioned, and it would be nice, I, I asked the Town Administrator to see if he could fill this position prior to that meeting on the 21st, because I, you know, I, I was talking to the, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, and she thought it would be useful if it was, if they had a full complement of committee members at that, at that point. So I'm going to try to get Tony to move quick on this. He doesn't need our approval. This is an appointment by the, by the Town Administrator, not the Town, not the Board of Selectmen. So hopefully, he can, he can, he can get someone appointed quickly. Anything else on this?
Well, you know, to be helpful, something that would be helpful to me anyhow is, you know, along with the flow chart that we're looking to get done on timelines, it would also help to know what boards or, or what, what boards and committees are appointed by, by who? By the, the selectmen, town, town administrator, the moderator. At least I'd feel comfortable knowing how that works.
Yeah.
I agree with you. It would be great to have somebody ready to go Monday for this meeting. It's an important meeting.
Right. Uh, right. I agree. Um, yeah, there, there is a Excel sheet that the Town Administrator has, I'm sure, that shows who appoints all the different various boards in town, whether it's the-
It's in the town charter, too.
Yeah, it's a, well, it's a special act, basically. Unless, unless the board was created by town meeting and specifically said, you know, three members appointed by the Board of Selectmen, blah, 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 those types of committees. But you know, the zoning board, the Conservation Commission, those are appointments made by the Town Administrator. The Board of Selectmen's, um, they, our approval is only required for, I believe, paid employees, full-time employees, and I think the board has 30 days to approve or disapprove an appointment by the Town Administrator for those types.
Hey.
Okay.
And Bobby Joe typed, typed in, said the TA appointments are listed on nahat.org.
Yeah, okay, great. He would know.
It would be good to get those in some easy-to-find place, because I know there's a lot of questions about, is that, is that a moderator appointment? Is that a TA appointment? Is that a Board of Selectmen appointment? Is that an electric? You know, it seems to be generally a lot of confusion about that, so it'd be nice to get that.
Be, be nice to be able to answer it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, there's another item I wanted to bring up that's not on this agenda. I think we were going to go into executive session tonight, but I don't believe we are now. And we perhaps were going to discuss it then, but that, the special act, the special act being the act, the legislative act that created the position of Town Administrator, requires the Board of Selectmen to inform the Town Administrator whether they are going to negotiate a new contract with him or her six months prior to the expiration of their contract. So I know that Tony's contract expires in June. And Dan, do we need a motion to say that, uh, that, that the Board of Selectmen, uh, will be negotiating with, with Tony to renew his contract?
No, we don't. If, 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 if we were not going to move forward and negotiate and try to renew with Tony, then we would need a motion to give notice under section 17B. But the fact that we're not exercising our rights under that section or that clause, that it's, it's just, we're putting it out there so you know that that's where we're headed.
Okay, right.
And, and let Tony know, too.
Well, I, for one, will be hoping to renew his contract. So he deserves better years ahead than he has the last few years. Uh, okay, great. What else do we have?
I think that's it.
That's it. Anything else?
Chat.
Nothing in the chat? Okay.
Oh, no, I know Alice Court just typed in something.
Okay.
Um, I'll read it. At the planning board meeting this week, there was an indication that after storms, the pump station by North, Northeastern East Point, Northeastern University of Eastern Point registers markedly increased pumping volumes, which led to concern that broken sewer pipes are absorbing stormwater, which is part of the infiltration and inflow that we talked about earlier, uh, which affects residents' fees. A member of the board indicated that NU refused to allow a town-hired consultant engineer to inspect the sewer pipe that runs through the property for breaks. Do you or V U S have information, additional information regarding those events? I can, I can speak to one thing, Alice, and because Northeastern produces so much wastewater, we had to come up with a bylaw, a draft bylaw, that causes them to have increased vigilance in terms of monitoring their wastewater system. Now, it's, that has nothing to do with Northeastern specifically. It's just that if someone produces X amount of water, then, or wastewater, then they have to come up with a program to be more vigilant. It could have been anyone, but it just so happens that Northeastern is the only entity big enough to produce that much flow. So the exact issue you're, you're mentioning there will be addressed through the bylaws. In terms of the, and Mark may know more about this, in terms of the town-hired consultant, I don't know about that. That sounds like something, that sounds like Dan Coffin, but I don't know.
No, I do, you know, this is, this goes back to when I was the Town Administrator. There is some inflow coming, I believe, from Northeastern that is unmeted. Um, I'm not quite sure where it's coming from, but it's pretty easy to determine. So you have a pump, a pump station at the corner of Northeastern and Nahat Road. That pump station receives wastewater from the East Point neighborhood. That's Vernon Street, Cliff Street, and Nahat Road. That's it. So there are about, what, 15 or 20 homes in that region that contribute wastewater to that pump station. We can look at our pumps. We have the run times on our pumps. We have the capacity of our pumps. We can figure out how much wastewater we're pumping from there. And it is hundreds of times more than what's being contributed by those households that are flowing into that pump station. So it's coming from somewhere. Uh, I remember 15 years ago, we ran a camera up there, and there was some inflow coming in from a wastewater line that appeared to be coming from Northeastern. And I suggested a while ago to Tony to just dig up that street and, and plug it, because we'll find out pretty quickly where it's coming from. But it's not coming, it's coming from the Northeastern property somewhere. And further investigation needs to be, needs to take place there. So there is something there.
We, we have to deal with this. I mean, this has been going on for a long time, and we're all paying for it needlessly. You know, we pay for sewage treatment plant, sewage treatment by, by the gallon, regardless of where it comes from. Uh, yeah, we got to do something about this.
I agree. Okay. Alright.
I see nothing else in the chat.
Okay, good. Alright, everybody, we made it without Tony, so, motion to adjourn?
I move that the, uh, Board of Selectmen meeting be adjourned.
I second that and wish everybody a happy holiday.
Motion made, seconded. And, uh, yeah, so happy holidays to everybody, uh, stay safe. Um, and again, Deb, thank you so much for bringing us through this year and you too, John, appreciate it so much. We couldn't have done it without you.
Michelle Capone says Merry Christmas to all.
Okay.
Josh Andrew Mai. We made a motion.
Yeah, Gene?
Seconded.
We're voting now.
Did I miss that?
Well, let's know. So.
Josh Andrew Mai, Gene Canty?
Gene Canty, aye.
Mark Cullen, aye. Good night, everybody.
Night, good night.